Well, welcome to everyone to the Iowa City City Council Work Session for Tuesday, April 6th. As you know, we are on a new time zone, 4:00 PM. And so, we will be starting all of our meetings just one hour earlier. So, 4:00 PM will be our work session and 6:00 PM will be the start of our formal meetings. We are on the first item for our work session, which is a process for interviewing city attorney applicants. And so, councilors, as many of you know, today is actually Eleanor's last meeting with us, work session with us, because her last day will be on the 16th of April. And so, certainly wanted to invite her to be a part of this conversation, because I think she can offer us something here. But, and also wanted to say thank you to Eleanor, who was hired by the city in 1996. Don't be doing the math, because people try to do math and add up some stuff. But she was, March 18th, 1986, she was hired to be the Assistant City Manager, I'm sorry, City Attorney. And then, September 29th, 1997, she was appointed as the City Manager. And so, thank you for all of your services that you've given to the city. We are so appreciative for all that you've done. And even though it's COVID, we send big hugs and we say thank you. And even though this is your last meeting, I know that you're a part of our great city and you'll continue to be a part of the work that we do at the city, even after you're gone. So, thank you so much for all that you've done.
Thank you.
Yes. And then, we are going to dive into the conversation about interviewing city attorney applicants. The applications are, for this position, they're all due by April 15th. And so, there's two things that we want to talk about. One would be the review of the applications and the second would be the interview process. So, for the review of the applications, currently, Councilor Burgess and MEMS and I are, we were kind of the ad hoc group of the councilors that is working with the City Manager to kind of go through the application. We posted the applications and did that, reviewed that information for the applications. And now, once the applications come in, we just need to talk about how would council like us to review those applications and kind of elevate the ones of interest to engage in an interview process? So, right now, we do have three of us appointed. And I wonder if council would entertain us three working alongside with Jeff to kind of thumb through the applications and then, you know, kind of figure out the ones that we want to bring for interview, for interview? And I think that's where the, you know, where we, if council is comfortable with that or there's another counselor that wants to be a part of that process, I think we certainly can talk about that right at this moment.
I know Councilor MEMS has served committees like this before, because I've done one of them with her for this clerk. So, I would be interested to see, I mean, that's kind of the process we used to sort of sift through the applications that you had and narrow it down to a certain number of the ones you think are the best qualified and then go proceed from there with interviews and not necessarily interview all of the applicants unless maybe you only have two or three applicants, I don't know how many you have, but I'd be curious to see what Councilor MEMS has to say.
Yeah, I think, Colleen, I think that is a reasonable way to start is for with the City Manager and with the group, the three of us, to do a preliminary look through all the applications and kind of narrow those down. And certainly, if we have trouble narrowing down or if there's issues in terms of numbers, too many, too few, we can certainly, you know, come back to the full council. But I would hopefully envision the three of us, along with maybe some guidance from Jeff, of narrowing that down to a pool that then we would all look at and out of that pool decide who we wanted to bring in for interviews. I would certainly want to bring back to the full council more than just who we think we might want to interview. I think the whole council needs to be involved in kind of that second narrowing down.
Do you all have any idea of the criteria that you're looking for? Is it basically going to be sort of look at, see what you get in and see, and then see what looks like a good fit for the city based on the, based on the request that you put out to pull in applications?
Well, we've got the job description and I haven't looked at it in quite a while, but typically, you know, you've got your minimum criteria and your desired. And obviously, I think, I know personally, I would be, you know, hoping we would find somebody with city attorney experience. If not at the highest level, it's certainly an assistant at a decent sized city, somebody who's got that municipal law experience, I think, would be, certainly would be a real positive to me. So, you know, we'll just have to go from there.
Can I ask you briefly what you think are some of the most important attributes going forward?
Was that a question to me? Oh. Well, I think as I've always told you, I, I, I mean, obviously, I think the job application sets out the minimum qualifications and as well as the preferred qualifications, which would be in, I think it says in-house, city attorney for five years. But it could also be someone who's had substantial municipal practice in a, in a private practice. I think that's, that's hard, hard to find. But after that, you know, I think that, I think it's good you have two lawyers in the group of three, because I think, I think as a layperson, it's a difficult thing to evaluate a lawyer. But I think, you know, there's things about lawyers that will speak to you, whether they have recommendations from people who are respected within the legal community, what kind of reputation they have in the legal community and the, whether they provide timely advice, whether they've had experiences that require them to do complex problem solving, preferably in areas that they're going to encounter at the city. So, I mean, really, it's just kind of the whole package. Obviously, you want to have someone that you feel like you can relate to, to. You know, I would caution you for looking for flashy and that kind of thing in a lawyer. I don't think you really need that in a lawyer. You just need a solid, smart, you know, they just need to be really, they need to be smart and they need to be, and they need to be willing to work as part of a team and realize that there are, that there are many things that the council and staff members are trying to figure out. And, and it's just, I think I said in the art, it's just trying to figure out what the possible solutions are and then taking those to the policymakers to decide what, what course they want to pursue.
Thanks.
First, I would like to thank you, Eleanor, for your service across the years. And, you know, just wish you the best for your retirement. And I guess things that you, since you being like our city attorney for long times, you know the challenges and like everything that our city went through. Do you think you can write some questionnaire for, like when we interviewed the people? If you can just write some kind of question that it will guide us to interviews, you know, that the person, like some challenges question that you think we should ask the applicant? Since you know, was the thing that's really happening in our city and, you know, some challenges that you think it is good to ask that question to the person, so.
I have, I have a list, I have a list of, you know, questions that I've used over the years when I hire assistant city attorneys. And I'm not sure the questions would necess, I mean, there might be some, obviously, that would need to be amplified, but a lot of the questions are probably good questions for a city attorney as well, so I can certainly share those.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful. And I, I would agree with Mayor Protim that just reviewing what you already have and just coming from some of the comments that you talked about, the attributes of what we should look for. Now, of course, there is the HR proper questions that we have to ask. And of course, this, you know, be ran by Karen, the interview questions or have involvement from our HR department. But I would agree, I think that would be kind of good for you to review. Because you do have a vantage point that us lay folks don't have. Of course, I do appreciate this process with having two attorneys on, on staff. And then, of course, we cannot discount the 12 years of service that Councilor MEMS have also provided for us, so, yeah.
Oh, yeah. I'll share, I'll send those questions to Jeff, if that works for you all.
Yeah. And I also have to say that we're pretty fortunate, because we have some, some labor people, you know, Councilor Taylor and Mayor Protim. I mean, these are people that, you know, work with workers, myself included, right? I hire people, so the good thing is that we do have some, I think we have a great team to kind of review some stuff. And even Councilor Thomas has worked in, you know, the municipal arena in his professional life. So, yeah, this would be great just as a team to work through this. And, and unless there's any more comments about this, then it's, if everyone is in agreement that Burgess and MEMS and I will shift through the applicants, bring them back to the full council, which I'm assuming that we'll have to have an executive session for.
You, I mean, cities do it different ways. I think typically, Iowa City has done it where the whole council, as opposed to a subcommittee, does the interviewing. And obviously, that has to occur in, it doesn't have to occur in executive session, but it typically does and the applicant needs to, Kelly knows this process, the applicant needs to request a closed session.
I guess, maybe we should, you know, discuss that at this point, if we're talking about the interview process, what do people, what are people's thoughts?
I think what Eleanor just said of the interviews happening with the full council, but probably in closed session, if that's what the applicant requests, makes sense to me. Once we, the three of us read all the applications, provide an initial list that we anticipate would be more than those that we would interview, council as a whole can select a few to interview and then we conduct those interviews.
Okay, well, great. What about timeline? Applicants close on the 15th? And then, when would council like those to be completed by? And I guess maybe this is something that we can coordinate our schedules offline with the three that is going to do the application review with the City Manager. But would it be, so the 15th is next Thursday? So then, if we gave ourselves at least a week or two to shift through those and then get that to the council the first Tuesday in, in May?
I'd like to see us try and get through them in a week, if we can. We don't, it'll depend on numbers, but I'd like to see the three of us try and get through that first round within a week and then be able to send our recommendations for that pared down list to council and then maybe a week or less to then kind of determine our finalists that we would bring in for interviews. I don't know if that seems reasonable to people?
So, and if there aren't very many applications, but how, I mean, I know that in, that sometimes we have to go back out and as we did with police chief and ask and prolong the search period a little bit, is there, is there sort of a threshold for that? Or is that just based on who you get regardless of how small the applicant pool is?
I think it's based on who we get. I mean, if we, even if it's a really small applicant pool, but we have somebody in there that we think is very qualified and would really be the right fit, I don't see the reason to prolong the process and drag it out. But we could have a huge applicant pool and not have anybody that we think is, we're comfortable with, is the right fit and we'd still need to go back out. So, I think it just depends on the quality of the applicants and we'll have to see once we start reviewing those.
I think your, your application period has been sufficiently long. If you've got attorneys who are looking for this kind of position, my guess is they'll be tuned into it.
So, it sounds like we, the proposal right now is for the week of the 19th, we'll review the applications and then the week of the 26th, submit the recommended applications, applicants to the full council. And then, May 4th, we'll have to review our work session agenda. But if we can get that on that work session agenda, Mayor Protim and I, along with the City Manager, will review that and then we can go into a session on that day. Does that sound okay? All right. Great. Anything else? Well, thank you again, City Attorney Eleanor. And we hope that this, the start of a 4:00 PM, you're a part of this historic moment here in our city.
No, you finally do it after 25 years, you're starting at 4:00.
I know.
I almost forgot today. Like, oh my goodness, it's 4 o'clock.
Yes. So, well, at least you can say you were a part of it, right?
Yes, yes. Part of the change.
Yeah, so thank you again for all that you've done.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is to discuss capital improvement plan and mark, plan for Market and Jefferson, one-way to two-way conversion project. And that is on the IP3, I don't remember which date, I believe that was the second one that we had.
Mayor, would you like me to do a brief intro for this item?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, thank you. So, in your information packet on the first, I included a background memo and then shared a copy of an email that I previously sent to you when we had some public comments about the removal of the Market and Jefferson project. So, so that, between that email and the memo, hopefully, we answered most of your questions. We do have staff here to answer some questions tonight. The, the short recap is that the Market-Jefferson two-way project was first identified in the downtown streetscape plan back in 2013. We then did some, some traffic studies to better understand how that project might function, both on Market and Jefferson and in some of their surrounding streets where traffic could be pushed. We had a preliminary budget of $500,000, which is, is pretty consistent for conversion costs when it's really just focused mostly on restriping a road. As we, as we do every year, we review the CIP projects and as projects get closer, we take a little bit deeper dive into the, into the, the design, try to anticipate what might, what other changes might be needed. And in this one, the more we got into it and started looking at the condition of the, of the traffic signals, which are probably 1970s vintage, we felt like it would be appropriate to replace those traffic signals. One, to just improve functionality and better accommodate pedestrian movement along the corridor, but knowing that the life of a traffic signal isn't going to extend much beyond 50 years either. We're currently probably right around that 50-year, a year mark right now. That pushed the project cost up to, at least the estimate, up to about 2.6 million. So, about a $2 million increase when you have to replace all the signals. And when you're getting into that work, you're doing a lot of curb ramp work as well. So, the project scope ballooned quite a bit. And I think council is aware that we do have limited resources in the CIP. We have some bonding limits that we try to stay true to, to keep our tax rate stable. And that increase just wasn't able to be accommodated without dropping what, what staff felt would be more impactful projects in the community. So, we removed that from, that project from the CIP and really focused on keeping other projects that were contemplated in, in the CIP and not delaying anything further that we felt was, was super critical. So, a couple of things I'll, I'll mention, just because we moved it out doesn't mean that, that corridor doesn't get looked at anymore. In our road resurfacing efforts this year, we'll, we'll focus on Jefferson Street. So, we'll do some pavement improvement. We'll take that opportunity to restripe the bike lanes and, and make those a little bit wider, put some buffer onto those, which should have some, some effects on, on the traffic calming as well as just making it more comfortable bike, bike lane on that street. And then, next year for resurfacing, we'll give Market Street a good hard look to and see if that rises to the top to where we can do some, some interim improvements on market. Outside of that project, I thought it'd be helpful just to give you a little bit more background on, on the changes made to a CIP in, from year to year. So, also in, in your work session is a kind of a differential report or a change summary. And you can go through and you can see every CIP project and how it changed from last year to the currently adopted CIP that you just approved last month. You'll notice most projects experience some change, whether it's a dollar amount estimate or a movement forward a year, backward a year, removal from the CIP or in some cases, new additions to the CIP. It's quite a bit of work that goes into putting that CIP together. And we have to look at things like the urgency of the need. Sometimes we think, you know, something may last another four or five years and all of a sudden, it has to be replaced on a more urgent basis. Or, or contrarily, we'll get some more life out of, out of pavement or a park playground than we thought we would. And then, as we experienced with this project, on an extreme level, oftentimes, we'll more closely evaluate scope and the price will go up or down based on, based on that refined analysis. So, that report's in there. We can answer any questions you have about those changes and how staff compiles our recommendations to you. If you are looking to add that project, that Market-Jefferson project back into the CIP, we'll need some direction from you on not only kind of a year to target that in, it's not possible for us to, to pull that together now. I think it was scheduled for next year previously. But we'll probably need to be looking at a couple of years out so that we can get an engineer working with this. But we'll also need some guidance on, on just how to fund that and whether, you know, you want us to identify projects to cut and bring those to you or if you'd like to do that as a, as a council. So, again, we have our engineering and planning staff here to answer any questions that you have. Hopefully, the work session packet items helped get in front of some of those questions.
Jeff, can I ask you a question? How is the condition of the road?
I'll leave that to, if we have Ron or Jason on the call, who's probably more closely looked at that condition.
I would say overall, it's in decent condition. We did identify at least a portion of Jefferson Street that we would, that we're planning to overlay this year. We were planning to take a closer look at Market Street for next year. So, I mean, I think they're in okay condition. It's probably getting to the point that at least portions of there are going to need some attention. But I think overall, they're probably not in terrible condition.
Is there is some street in town, they are in a worse condition than, than those two streets?
I would say, yes, there are.
In a bad condition, I mean?
Yeah, it's certainly not, the, those two streets are not the worst condition that we have around town. I would note that the estimate that we included doesn't really address street condition, is more signals and curb ramps and that kind of stuff. But to answer your question, no, I would not put these in the lowest category as far as condition.
Well, I'll, I'll kind of be the elephant in the room here and, and talk a little bit about this, because I have to admit, I was disappointed when I found out that through word of mouth that it had been pulled from the CIP, because it seemed as though, when we initially discussed this, it had strong support even by the downtown district and the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhood, the council and, and other folks. So, I, I thought it was a go. And I, I'm remembering that past precedent has been set on this as far as increasing estimates on projects. I'm thinking in particular Pet Mall, which of course was necessary, the changes were necessary, but that skyrocketed almost double the initial cost that was in the CIP. But instead, it was modified and left in the CIP. So, I can only see this project as, as getting even more expensive. You're talking about the, the signals, but somewhere in your info, you said, if we're doing two-way signals, they would have to be different than what you would put in for one-way signals. So, we certainly wouldn't want to put the one-way signals in there and then have to turn around when we do convert it to two-way and do two-way signals. That would just seem not, not right. But, so I would, I would just say and encourage that as soon as possible, if you're saying now, it can't be 2021 or 2022, obviously, as soon as possible after 2022, in 2023, we need, we need to look at getting it in the CIP and getting it done, because there seems to be a lot of support out there. And our surrounding communities, Des Moines and Cedar Rapids, they've all found that it's kind of an archaic thing to have one-ways and they've, they've been slowly eliminating their one-way. So, I just think we need to follow suit and do that.
Yeah, if I could just add on to that a little bit, we certainly would not, I think, when we, when we remove this project, our thought would be that when the time comes to replace those signals, that that would be the time to look at this. What we didn't want to do is, is go in and spend a little bit of money now and then five, 10 years from now, go, go back in and have to redo, redo anything or undo anything. So, yes, you're right, when those signals need to get replaced, I think that's the time we would do it. And we've done a lot of these conversions over the last few years. I think we've been pretty, pretty good at pursuing some of these one-way to two-way conversions. We agree, it's, it's not a disagreement on the, that the project needs to be done. It's, it's a, it's a question of urgency. And, and, you know, unlike the, the Pet Mall project, which, you know, had to address some really core infrastructure underneath, this is one that the urgency isn't there, at least in, in our particular view as staff, compared to some of the other CIP projects where you have really failing conditions on major roadways or some park improvements that, that have, what we feel are some more critical updates. But just to be clear, staff still supports the project. We just didn't see a way to, to fit it into the puzzle of the CIP, given the, the cost increase.
Jeff, can you remind me, is this going to be a one-way to two-way conversion on the entire length of Market and Jefferson or just near the downtown area?
Yeah, it it would be the entire length, except we're not sure that how it would work west of Clinton. As you get into the university campus, there may be good reason to keep that one-way. Given the really high volumes of of pedestrian crossing there at the Cleary Walkway. But the idea would be that it would be the entire, the entire way.
I've never been real supportive of this and I I I can understand staff's position, but I think when the broader community sees this moving forward, I think you need to be prepared for an incredible amount of pushback. I don't think many people even know this is on our radar. On the north side, you know, when you look at traffic flow, there's there's not, we've got, you know, major arterials on the south side and you've got Burlington going through the center. And it makes it a whole lot easier for people. As I've mentioned to people, this might happen. They're like, oh, no, they can't imagine it. And I would certainly agree with you, Jeff, that once you get into the campus, I think having it two-way on those hills that go down to the river is inviting potential disaster in the winter. I mean, I've seen people slide down Market Street Hill. I personally have been in situations of trying to get up Jefferson Street and having to back down because you can't get up and see other cars do the same. So to have those two really steep hills two-way, I think, is going to be problematic. And I think I think when the word really gets out to the broader community, I think just I think council and staff that are here at the time need to be prepared for a lot of pushback.
Well, I'll give a few a few thoughts, trying to provide a little bit of context on this. You know, I did look at the the Streetscape Master Plan in terms of its implementation and what were prioritized in that master plan. And what was said there was that generally speaking, the highest priority projects are those that address safety and public infrastructure needs. And Market Street and and the the focus, I think, in the downtown Streetscape Master Plan was on the commercial activity portions of it. Market Street was identified as one of the four streets in the priority one category. So it was identified as a high priority. The downtown district advocacy statement in September of 2019 under access and mobility felt that the the change would be critical to the success of the retail neighborhood in Northside Marketplace. So so we have those two entities, you know, those two reports suggesting that it's it's a high priority project. I think it's important to think about Market and Jefferson in the notion of repairing what what might be called the, you know, the connected network of streets in the core of Iowa City. The gridded connected network. And and the the damage that the one-ways do in terms of that sense of connection. And in part, you know, we've talked about the speeding, right? It's you know, two multi-lane one-ways do accelerate traffic speeds. You know, there's a tendency when you're driving on multi-lane one-ways to jockey from one lane to the other, depending upon where the gaps are. So the speeds tend to be higher. They also have an impact on adjacent property values. You know, I think we can all sense of how, you know, if if one lived or had a business on a street where there was high-speed traffic, that that would degrade the quality of life of those adjacent properties. And I've talked to many people about that and that's, you know, that's what I hear. You know, John, please, when are we going to be converting our one-way systems because of the impacts they have on on the adjacent properties? The another issue is the convenience. It's the one-ways tend to be confusing. They can force circuitous routes when you're trying to get from one place to another. We have a lot of traffic that tends to go the wrong way on the one-ways. I talked to a clerk at John's Grocery not too long ago and said, what do you see at at your corner there? You know, John's is at the corner of Gilbert and Market. And he said he sees a car going the wrong way about once an hour during his time there. And and we see it all the time. All of us have seen that. And that that has to do with the connectivity and I think the expectation of what people have given the size of Iowa City, you know, that that the one-ways, and I think in part, it's because we are beginning to to, you know, block by block, reduce the presence of the one-ways. But there isn't an expectation, certainly with visitors, that a city like Iowa City would have one-way traffic. So there is, you know, that issue as well. And then I would say the other the other factor would be, you know, following up on our conversations over Black Lives Matter, one-way streets don't self-regulate. You know, they they do require more policing because of the the fact that people do drive at higher speeds. There are drivers who who fail to understand that you know, we have them in the first place. And so they do require more policing. And then, of course, if there is a collision, responding to the collisions. As as Pauline was saying, they they and and this, this is what I find interesting, is you do find cities and our our neighbor to the north, Cedar Rapids. They converted their entire downtown. That was that was their high priority. Let's convert all our our grid network in the downtown from one-way to two-way. And they started that in 2015. But there are other and and the I have a quote here from Jennifer Pratt, who is their development director. These two-way conversions are a critical piece to make it feel like a place where you want to live and walk, walk around and feel safe. So that if if we value safety, both for vehicular travel, pedestrian travel and bicycle travel, you know, many cities have taken the position that it's a very important strategy to to bring the streets back to two-way traffic as soon as possible. Some other cities in Iowa that have done this would be Davenport or planning or have completed conversions would be Davenport, Des Moines, Indianola, Muscatine, Dubuque. So it's it's a very popular strategy. South Bend, Indiana is a national strategy. Pete Buttigieg, when he was mayor of South Bend, did something similar to the the downtown streets there as Cedar Rapids did. And I I think was in part the work that he did in South Bend that gave him the the opportunity to service U.S. Secretary of Transportation. So my feeling is is that, you know, I've been kind of waiting for this project. I felt, you know, given the way in which the the master plan called for priority, safety is priority one, that with the exception of some intersections, we weren't really looking at the corridors that in my view are the most dangerous and that really do disrupt the character and feeling of the downtown area. So so from my standpoint, I was kind of patiently waiting while we were going through these projects. And as Pauline said, some came in higher than was expected. And I said, all right, fine, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing the one-ways converted. So I would also note that the the cost over, you know, the the this additional cost is not for aesthetic enhancements. It's for replacing the signalization and the curb ramps and the signals. You know, are arguably already in a deferred maintenance status at this point, being that they were installed in the 70s. Some of the potential funding sources that I was looking at, and this obviously would take some time to consider would be we have a curb ramp annual fund. We also have a traffic signal annual fund that could be drawn from. And one project that I walked over the last few days was Fairchild Street from Clinton to Lynn, it's a two-block segment on both sides of Dubuque. That's a $1.4 million project. You know, it's it, yes, it's not in great condition, but none of the brick streets are are in really great condition. It's it seemed Lynn Street maybe in worse condition than Fair Fairchild, just based on my observation. So that might be one to consider and see if there are ways we can repair what needs to be repaired and and hold off on the wholesale replacement of either one or both blocks. And I'm sure there are more. But those were some that, you know, I just looked at quickly before the work session today.
I got disconnected early. I was asking my questions. You know, I still go into as the same questions. I I get the first one, but the second one I ask is it is another street? They said the street are in decent condition. Is there is another street in town that really in a bad condition that we need to repair? If you can give me an answer to that question?
Yeah, if you think back to the work session we had in March, when we reviewed the the street conditions, we have a great number of streets that are in worse conditions than this. But again, the this this was really not trying to solve the street condition. It was trying to solve the the traffic circulation and pedestrians' circulation. But you're, it's the same funding source. So if if pavement condition is a higher priority, yes, this the these streets would not be at the top of the list in terms of, you know, what's what's in worse condition than Iowa City.
Okay, Jeff, can you remind me, was the source of the fund normally for like streets?
Yeah, we would either do general obligation bonds or road use tax in a project like this. We would probably look at that traffic signal account, too. That's a fairly minor account. We have about 150,000 a year in that account. So that's a you know, that's not even quite a complete intersection there. That's less than an intersection would cost. That tends to be an account where we accumulate it for a couple of years and then we 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 spend it. But you're there looking at general obligation bonds or road use tax.
And and how much it will cost if we want to convert both of them?
Right now, our estimate is 2.6 million.
2.6 million. Yeah. I understand what John and Pauline are saying, but if there is, you know, if Iowa City resident, all of them are taxpayer and there is some street even like in a bad condition, then those two is create that, I guess, Ron and said is in decent condition. I think we need to focus for all Iowa City, not only like certain street for the people, just because of like, I don't even what the reason for doing it right now for traffic and whether it is like circulation of traffic or whether this is will benefit, you know, some business around the area or I I really don't know what the reasons right now. But I think there is many street in bad condition. I even I I I know certain streets that I will drive on and it's really in bad condition and need our attention. I'm not arguing like converting this, you know, whatever the reason is, but it's not the time for it. I believe we need to focus on the street that's really in a bad condition. You know, it is really interesting that we just like, you know, the payment that are getting higher and that's concerning us and Black Lives Matter and that's concerning us for all this. You know, by the way, affordable housing also is a big thing that we never move forward on it. And houses getting, you know, really higher every year. If we don't like really have affordable housing, it's still we, you know, since we get higher. I hope the same mentality that we use for this, we use it when we talk about affordable housing and try to find fund for them, too. We haven't done a lot, you know, for a long time, we didn't, we did not move. I don't want to say we haven't done, but we did, but we need to do more in certain areas. This is street is look decent for now. And I think we need to look, if we're just talking about the street, we need to give the priority for the other streets that really need to be fixed. And and when the time come for it, for this one, we can do it. I just support the staff decision on this. Thank you.
Jeff, to put a little finer point on it, I did hear you say that when the traffic signals are at the end of their life and would be replaced, that the the conversion would happen at that time. Is that right?
Yeah, that that to us, that's the logical nexus.
So if this project isn't in this current five-year CIP, do you have any sense of how or when we would know that that would hit?
I would I would guess, and I'll ask Jason and Ron and Scott there to to jump in if they disagree, but I'm guessing we're looking at five to 10 years with with the age of those signals. Is that okay assumption for the engineering crew there?
I think that's a good assumption, Jeff.
I guess I would just add that I I think there there are legitimate issues with the the north side businesses. It's tougher to to support these small businesses when when it's hard, when it's harder to get there and you have to and you have to drive around. We're trying to, we're trying to reduce car traffic. And but backing up a little bit and and also referring to what Mayor Protam did, we're going to have enormous chunk of money coming our way that I that I think we're going to all take, want to take a really good look at coming from the American Rescue Plan. And that that may not address the street, but I think it can it can address some other things such as among others, affordable housing. So I'm not I'm not personally concerned that we're not going to have the opportunity within the next year or so to really make an impact there.
So I wanted to kind of get a sense of where people are on 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 this as far as staff direction. So it sounds like Councilor Burgers, I know that you want a clarification or about the conversion and the traffic lights. Are you in a, is your position to kind of wait until that takes place?
I'm comfortable with that. Yeah, I'm not asking that it be put in, put back in in the near term.
Okay. And then
I support the staff, too.
And is there anyone else that supports staff? I, you know, to and I guess I can, I I in this situation, I think when I look at the 2.6 million to convert, the traffic lights are going to be happening on five to 10 years. One question that I do have is, when we do the conversion, is this more paint on the street or does that actually involve the changing of some of the roads, widening, shortening, e- essentially digging up the road?
Yeah, Ron, why don't you field that one or Jason?
I think for the most part, the pavement would stay the same in between intersections. There may be some work at the intersections to address the the radius returns and curb ramps and that kind of stuff. But for the most part, the pavement between intersections would remain consistent with what it is today. We may look at reallocating that, similar to what we're doing with widening the bike lanes, but I think as far as total curb to curb width, we'd be about the same.
Okay. I I do want to also point out or maybe seek some clarification. I understand that the staff is supportive of this, just kind of down the road. You know, Counselor Thomas made great points when it came down to the one-way, two-way conversions. Is there a greater plan to look at all of our one-way streets and try to convert them? And and I heard Council members, you know, bring up some points about, you know, that having a one-way or two-way conversion west of Clinton Street, those are concerning, right? You, you know, those are steep hills, absolutely. Of course, my mind was trying to figure out a solution on the snow days, you know, do we go out and do some cones and only have one-way traffic coming up Jefferson Street? You know, I don't know. But 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 yeah, that is concerning, right? Those are steep hills, but is there a plan for one-way to two-way conversions throughout our entire community?
Yeah, and I see Kent Ralston on the on the call. Ken, if you could help me with this one. Well, Kent's getting ready. I do. I do want to make it clear for those, you know, listening, we have done one-way, two-way conversions in recent years. We have done them in the downtown. It wasn't too long ago where Washington Street was was one-way. And we've we've continued to look at that. We've been pretty aggressive, as as this council knows, with with other roadway design changes with four to three lane conversions as well that have been tough projects in the community, but we've we've forged ahead on those. We continue to do that. I think the guiding plan that comes to mind for me before I turn it over to Kent is is the Bicycle Master Plan. A lot of those projects were identified in that that effort. Kent, can you add on to that?
Yeah, I can. So I was sitting here trying to actually think about how many one-way streets we had left in town. Jeff did mention, you know, we we reached, we recently changed Governor and Dodge both south of Burlington. In fact, Dodge just finished up this year. The downtown street certainly, we changed Washington a few years back. If and when we get to Market and Jefferson, the only main one-way roads I can think of that would be left in town are Dodge and Governor north of Burlington, which are also a part of the highway system, part of the state highway system. So that presents some challenges that we'll have to work through if and when we ever get to that point. The other one way that I can think of currently would be down around the County Administration Building, around Benton and Dubuque and Clinton. And I believe the current thinking is that when some of those properties redevelop in that area, the city carton property and some others, that we would look at also sort of unwinding those one, that one-way loop that currently exists. That's a little awkward. And I think that's the time we would, we would look to get rid of those. With Mark, with Jefferson Market, I did want to mention, too, we haven't talked about level of service a lot. And when we did the actual traffic study back in 2015, 2016, certainly there was a lot of good points made by council and others tonight that I won't argue. I do just want to mention that when it comes down to actual level of service for bikes, pedestrians and vehicles, the actual study showed it was pretty much a wash. So there are certainly other benefits to that, but when it comes down to the actual level of service, I don't think we're going to see any really great improvements when we make that with respect to how long it takes a vehicle, bike or pedestrian to travel those corridors or across those corridors for that matter. So just wanted to point that out as well, but yeah, I think I think the the bigger goal, Mayor, is to to look at all these corridors and and eventually get rid of all our one-ways, just sort of a matter of time. And then, of course, working with the state if we ever get to Governor and Dodge, which will be a little bit of a challenge.
Is there any plans, Ken, to kind of, you know, have have this planned out? You know, from you all and even including the, you know, the when you reach out to the state about North Dodge?
Sure. So like I said, I think the the area down around the County Administration Building will work itself out, I think, when those properties turn. I think that's the idea there. And when we put in the extension of Capitol Street, which is in the Riverfront Crossings Master Plan, Market and Jefferson, of course, we're talking about tonight, and then Dodge and Governor, I I don't have a an outlook on the timeframe for that. That gets into how those roads are funded as well, and I would have to defer to to the city manager on that and the the engineering folks. But if and when we ever convert those, if the state would not allow it and we did it anyway, they would be more than happy to allow us to do it, but then we would also own those streets, which we share funding for those now. Dodge Street Reconstruction is in your CIP here in a few years. It's something like a 10-plus million dollar project, and of course, the DOT will be paying for roughly half of that, I think, when the time comes. But if we were to ever gain jurisdiction of those roadways, they would be ours to pay for in perpetuity. So I think I don't know how that conversation will go, Mayor, but that's certainly a conversation that that will have to be had when when we get to that point.
Thank you. And it sounds like, you know, staff is on board with one way to one-way to two-way conversions in in general. I I won't, you know, say that is across the board, but in general. Yeah, so I at least for staff direction, there's a majority of council that doesn't support moving forward with this and and I have to agree with Mayor Protam when she mentioned that the role conditions, there there are worse roles than that are out there right now that we can be spending two point six million dollars. If there wasn't any type of plan for this for conversion for the Jefferson Governor, then, you know, Jefferson Market, I'm sorry, then there might be, I I might have a different position, but as of now, I don't support any change. So it sounds like there's a majority of council that don't support the change, and so there's no direction to staff to do anything different.
Mayor, as you transition to the next item, I I for those listening, I I want to make sure that folks know we're we're still committed to that downtown streetscape plan. We've invested quite a bit in follow-up to that plan. When you think of Washington Street Reconstruction, the Ped Mall Reconstruction and and a lot of smaller projects that surround that. Your CIP also has the Dubuque Street Reconstruction between Iowa and Washington, which will be a very significant project, much like Washington was a few years ago. So we are continuing to work on that plan. We do feel like it's a it's a good guidebook for us. And Market Jefferson's still a still a key piece to that, but much like Clinton Street and Lynn Street and 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 the many others that are there, it's just for for staff, at least right now, it's not the not the highest priority. But hopefully, we'll get to it and we'll get to it and and soon. We'll make sure to to take another look at it with with next year's CIP. And we'll we'll make sure on the public work side that as we do signal checks and inspections that as that date gets closer, when we know that we're going to have some, that that the engineering's ready to go for the conversion piece. So there won't be whole much, a whole lot of delay there.
Great. If nothing else, we'll move on to the next item, which is explore tax amendments to facilitate more neighborhood commercial in residential areas, and that's in the same IP of April 1st, IP4 in the information packet. All right, Jeff, you want to take this away?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is an item that's been hanging out there since you created your strategic plan about a year ago. We're really just looking for some council discussion here. We're not expecting you to to be able to articulate exact code changes that you'd like to see, but we really didn't have a chance during the strategic planning effort to get too detailed in our discussions. But this centers around the idea that the council would like to see some smaller neighborhood nodes in and around residential areas. You know, those those walkable neighborhood commercial centers that 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 residents would would really benefit from. We do have several examples of those, probably to to varying degrees of success. Certainly, the area that we just talked about in the North Side is looked at as a very kind of very successful neighborhood commercial node. We also have smaller neighborhood centers, for example, like Old Town Village on the East Side that that is walkable from a number of different areas out there. Council's aware that earlier this year, we presented some code changes that you approved that would help facilitate more infill of existing commercial nodes, and and some of that is going to help surrounding neighborhoods. You can think of the North Dodge Coffee Shop example that that we brought to you. That certainly has a good residential base around it. So there's been a little bit of progress on this item. But really wanted just a chance for you to articulate which which you would like to see more of in the community so that we could give some critical thought to to code changes that might be needed to to facilitate that. And the last thing I'll mention is you're you're well aware that we're working on the form-based code for the South District. There is a neighborhood commercial district that is part of that code proposal that we'll be bringing to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to you here shortly. And and so as we think of new greenfield developments, whether it's South District or West or East, when we apply this form-based code, we will have, we believe, the tools in place to 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 really facilitate that type of development. So I'd encourage you to think more on infill opportunities than greenfield, because I think the greenfield solution will be coming your way and we can have a discussion on that in the future.
Jeff, I was wondering if there's been any outreach to like the Neighborhood Association, in particular, like the South District Association, they meet pretty frequently and like asking for input from them on on what they feel their neighborhood might need for some commercial areas. I'm very much in favor of this, and we have some very, as you'd mentioned, some very successful neighborhood commercial. And then we have the few that were grandfathered in, that Thomas Meat Market over there off of Muscatine has been very successful. And it's in the heart of a very walkable, single-family neighborhood. And and of course, there's the wonderful Deluxe Bakery that also was grandfathered in because it had been commercial prior and and it's just very successful also. There's always someone there, a very busy place and in the heart, again, of a single-family neighborhood. So I'm very much in favor of those kinds of things, but looking around and driving up and down that Highway 16 corridor, there there are some vacant buildings. But I was just wondering, and I was looking, when I looked into neighborhood commercial, it listed, you know, things like convenience stores and, you know, those banks and and going up and down that corridor, we've we've got an abundance of of those kinds of things in that area, pizza places and banks and convenience stores. But one thing that I did not see and we should maybe try to encourage more of, we're lacking daycare. I would like to see that, and I would hope, and I would think that that's probably what these residents would would say is that they they need some form of daycare over on that side of town.
Yeah, good, good comments there. That's helpful. We have not done any outreach, probably. I would I would guess the last time we did any type of related outreach would be the last time we updated comprehensive plan, whether that's the the entire umbrella comprehensive plan that we have or or district comp plans is probably the last time we did targeted outreach on this subject.
I guess personally, I I think having a commercial opportunities throughout the, you know, neighborhoods is 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 a good idea. One of the concerns that I have, of course, is the neighbors that that may complain if there is some type of a business that in has a lot of foot traffic. We could anticipate that there would be some people that would complain about that. It's it's a it's a different use. They didn't buy their house to have, you know, all this foot traffic and all the parking spaces in front of their house taken up. So I I mean, I I support the idea of commercial spaces. I I I think it makes a lot of sense, you know, to explore, but I can hear some, you know, just neighbors coming forth with with complaints substantiated or not, most times, well, whatever would be going that as a commercial, wouldn't even be there yet. So it would all be assumptions made by neighbors how that one business will change their neighborhood and 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 make it feel different. So I I I'm all about commercial spaces being in residential areas. I think that's just something that we have to consider.
Mayor, that's a very excellent point, and I forgot I was going to bring that up. We did have that situation a while back when Paul's left their their building. And the neighbors are obviously missing Paul's, but the the business that went in there, no fault of their own, had bright lights, brighter lights than what Paul's ever did. And they, right behind them, to the north of them, was a residential neighborhood, an older residential neighborhood with not much screening for trees or fences or anything, so the bright light shone right into there. So not necessarily the foot tra- traffic, Mayor, but those sort of unanticipated things like the lighting and the noise, perhaps.
Then I think those, I hear you both, and I think those things are solvable, too, through good neighbor meetings and working with the community. There's, we're always going to encounter when there are new uses or new things come in, a certain amount of nimbyism and people and and change is hard. But if we're looking at at walkable communities, things that we can, that people can get to, that they don't need a car to get to, then small businesses, groceries, coffee shops, whatever, whatever we can encourage, I think our greatest infill. The question is, are they viable as businesses?
One other thing that I did want to mention is for, you know, these commercial spaces and neighborhoods, there is somewhat of an equity where my assumption is that the properties would then be charged commercial taxes. Is that correct, potentially?
If if you're thinking about the examples that were given with the the Meat Market and and Deluxe, then yes, those would be commercial. Not necessarily the same for for like a home-based business type of operation that already takes place in neighborhoods. So depends on the degree. If you're thinking coffee shops and daycares, then yes.
What about a clothing store?
Yeah, I would think that that's going to be commercial.
That's going to be okay. So and and the only reason I bring that up is when I think about just some of our minorities, you know, within the community, if they want to get into having their, you know, renting a a property just for commercial commercial use. Some of that could be a little cost prevented, you know, prohibitive, but I at least wanted to make mention that, you know, we probably should keep in mind what type of businesses will be will be charged commercial versus not be very clear, and we probably already have that. But we just want to be cognizant that, you know, someone may already have a little small business that they want to take it to a next level and rent a space for commercial. And the revenue may not be that great, you know, starting out. So just wanted to at least make mention that whatever we're doing, let's put on our equity lens as well.
Thanks for that comment, Mayor. I was going to just ask Jeff, I think in the memo, this really was directed towards the the more pure commercial uses, I guess, is how I read it. Just off the top of your head, I mean, the home-based business, there's some flexibility there. If you if you reside in the place where you're, I mean, there's certain activities that are allowed in in homes. I wonder if maybe an educational campaign relating to some of that might be useful so that people understand what they can do in their in their residence versus if they had, you know, property that was really only used for commercial purposes.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely promote some of that. And and I see you're on the call. If you've got more information on this, let me know. But generally, your home-based businesses, you can think of it, someone that does an in-home daycare, which the city is actively funded and supported workforce development in that area to to promote in-home daycare. That's something that can take place in in your own home. You have, you you probably have a lot of people in the community that may make something and sell it out of their, sell it out of their home. You know, maybe someone's making jewelry and selling it online. You know, that that type of business generally works good for an in-home type of use. Where we start to, where we start to draw that line is is what the mayor brought up earlier, which is foot traffic, you know, how many people are coming and going? What does the parking look like? What are those other effects on the community? Probably, you know, a common one that cities struggle with, not necessarily that that I could point to here, but there's a a lot of people that might try to do a car repair business in their own driveway. And then, you know, you occasionally hear complaints about disabled cars on the on the roadway or just the 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 noise and the negative aspects of of doing that mechanic-style work in a residential area. That's a, that's a common one that cities struggle with. That would be, you know, borderline incompatible in a lot of different areas, depending on how large that, you know, that operation grew to be. And I think that is the, you know, that is the struggle is finding that line. I think, you know, a lot of people like that idea of of a morning bakery that they can walk to and and have coffee at. But if you're asked to think of five or six other uses that may fit, you you may be hard-pressed to 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 do that. And that's, that's where it gets tricky in writing, writing code and 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 trying to make some allowances. I think what you've seen in the past is, like the coffee shop example, when we have a good proposal like that that fits, we analyze our code, we try to figure out how to make that project work, and we tend to do it in a narrow way so that it doesn't have negative. And we tend to do it in a narrow way so that it doesn't have negative unintended consequences.
Some of my thoughts on this would be the matrix kind of covers the types of commercial zones we have. Some of them do not allow residential. And in terms of the, the kind of the concept of the suburban retrofit in commercial areas that are struggling and they have large parking lots. Some have seen the introduction of residential development, partly to give kind of a mixed-use component, which is inherently walkable. So you have more people living nearby who can then use that commercial district. So that's certainly one thing that could be considered or assessed as to whether there's an opportunity for that, that type of retrofit. Other commercial districts, and we've seen it on Northside Marketplace, is the creation of a, of a public space. The closure of Lynn Street between Market and the alleyway there, I would say, has been the most significant move in that, in that neighborhood commercial district since, well, in the last 10 years. So it's, people are very excited about having that come back, at least the people that, that I've been talking to. That, that's something the downtown has as well. So, you know, trying, trying to see how that could be replicated in some of our other commercial districts would be something to think about. In terms of the greenfield, I do think the, the vision that we should try to, you know, create, accomplish would be the idea that we are creating a small town. So you have that same level of mixed-use walkability. There are lots of moving parts that go into achieving that. It's not just missing metal. It's not, not 10-foot lanes. I mean, all of those things play into it, but it's really a complete picture made up of a lot of elements. So I'm hoping that, say, in the Carson Farm, that's what we see, is the creation of a viable mixed-use place, which has the feeling of either a small Iowa town or an urban, an urban neighborhood like the North Side, which has its own mixed-use components. What the other interesting thing I think is that we've seen a lot of with COVID, and I think it will stay with us, is many people are at home working virtually now. So it's almost like we've brought, without any significant impacts on the neighborhood, more people in the neighborhood all week long. And if you create, so there, it's, you know, people are staying home now instead of commuting to work somewhere else. So there's a larger population who is interested in things close by. So if we provide those things and make it easy to get to them, that, that should help revitalization. I mean, thank, certainly in the North Side, you know, those, those of us who are working at home now, really the thought of being able to go to Northside Marketplace, it's an outdoor public space, is very inviting. That, that could also be replicated. And I think there are more people who will be interested in having those sorts of opportunities, either within walking or bicycle, bike distance. You know, there's a concept that I think Iowa City is really set up well to achieve. And that is the idea that either by walking or bicycling, you can pretty much access all that you would, you need in your life within 15 minutes. So that just simply means making sure we have, you know, that bicycle network, safe streets to walk, pleasant walk, comfortable walk, connecting us from our homes to the nearest commercial neighborhood district. So I think there are some great opportunities, both in the short and the long term, in terms of, you know, creating more vibrant neighborhood commercial areas that also generate more taxable value. Because some of these auto-oriented commercial districts are really, I would say, underperforming. And I think there's an opportunity to turn them around.
Jeff, how often do, do potential businesses come to the city with a, with a location that's in a residential neighborhood and just essentially at that first step or first inquiry get turned away because the idea of, you know, I guess they would have to rezone, right? And the, and the concept of rezoning within a residential zone just isn't, is kind of a non-starter. So they just get turned away. Does that happen often? Do we have examples? I mean, not necessarily specific businesses, but like, is that something that happens at the staff level?
I certainly don't hear many requests at all for, for that. Anne, if you, if you feel those, please jump in and let me know. But no, I don't think we, I don't think we get a ton of those requests. It's not just the compatibility with a, with necessarily the the neighborhood, but it's also, there's difference in code, you know, building code requirements when you start to get into a commercial venture that could make conversion of a residential space a lot more difficult.
I would just add, this is Anne Russel with Neighborhood and Development Services, that since I've been here, I think for three years, I received two inquiries of businesses that wanted to locate it in a residential zone.
Well, I'll just add, well, I'll just add that I personally came before council in 2006. I requested zoning to a commercial right next door to Linsing Funeral Home, a house there. And I was denied. So I know the feeling about being denied. But I did want to maybe just add and ask, and about any accessibility concerns? Or is that something that typically goes into consideration for the conversion?
I think in the inquiries that I received, they were proposing a use that was not allowed in the zone. So it was, it was really a function of our residential zones not allowing very many non-residential uses.
Sure. Okay. I'm done.
To me, the issue, and I don't know that I can give any clear direction, staff requested at the end of the memo. But when I think of, you know, businesses and commercial in a residential area, the idea of having businesses and amenities there that people can walk or bike to are just great. I think the viability of very many of those in this day and age, unfortunately, is probably pretty limited. You, you don't have a whole lot of people that can come in and do what Jamie Powers did with the Deluxe Bakery. Not to say there are others, but those are the exceptions, not, not real common. And so people unfortunately are still going to be, you know, getting in their cars and driving across town or, you know, to the grocery store or to the hardware store. And, you know, we've got a nice one on the North Side, et cetera. But it's finding businesses, it's trying to remove roadblocks from people who do have an idea for a business that could work well in the residential without having a negative impact on the life of people in that neighborhood. So in other words, not creating an excessively large amount of foot traffic or vehicular traffic or noise or odors, things like that. To me, if those are not factors, then why not let the business be in the residential area? As long as it's not having that negative impact on the neighborhood. So I don't know if that really helps staff, but when I think about trying to open things up for more business in those residential, it's like, yeah, anything that's not going to have that excessive volume of traffic, excessive noise, smells, or anything else that would deteriorate from the quality of life in the neighborhood.
I, I agree with that. I don't, again, Jeff, thanks for saying it's not up to us to figure out the how. But when we think about what, what the differential between commercial and residential zones is, you know, I think we're trying to control or buffer for those things that Susan was mentioning, in the traffic, the hours of operation, right? Lights, sounds, smells, parking. So, so yeah, if there's a way to address those concerns, and I guess for the couple that are the non-conforming but legal uses, that's still, is that still like a pretty intensive case-by-case process where you would figure out, you know, all those elements as it goes? I mean, if there was some way to, if there was some way to implement like that, that sort of review that you would have, you know, for any business that would want to locate in what would otherwise be a residential area so that you could address all of those factors and it's not like a, you know, use by right for any type of business?
I guess one thought I have on that is with the legal non-conforming situations, we don't have a lot of, we have a handful of commercial uses within residential zones. I don't think it comes up that often where we're analyzing whether or not there's a legal non-conforming situation. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's very time-intensive because it's, it's not that frequent.
Yeah, I guess I was just imagining, is there some process, like some evaluative process that could occur if someone inquired, hey, can I do this in my neighborhood? You know, that, that would be on a more case-by-case basis?
I think what you're talking about is some kind of special exception process. I mean, the code would have to define what, you know, what the availability of the special exception would have to be put in the code. But then it would be the Board of Adjustment that would impact, for instance, the effect on the neighborhood, et cetera.
Thank you, Eleanor. And just one, one thing that Counselor Thomas raised that I wanted to make sure, based on your memo, Jeff, it looks like that residential, like multifamily is allowed in most commercial zones, just not in the intensive or highway commercial district. So individuals could come in with like a mixed housing and commercial development now in something that is a, most of our commercial zones, is that right?
Anne, you want to take that?
Sure. That's true. I would just say that in most of our commercial zones, we have a requirement that the first floor of any building has to be commercial. So if you're thinking about redeveloping kind of a strip mall, which I think Councilmember Thomas was talking about, to incorporate any residential uses, they have to be above the first floor.
Okay, thank you.
So Jeff, did you, did you get what you needed?
I think we have enough to kind of further our staff discussions on it. So it's, it's been helpful to hear this. And there's a couple of different thoughts that we'll, we'll take from here and we'll, we'll come back to you if we need some more guidance or if we want to bounce some ideas off you.
All right. Great. We are on to clarification of agenda items.
Mayor, I don't know if this is the right time, but I think we talked about resetting a work session for going over the preliminary plan restructure of the police. And I think we looked at dates and then we're going to reschedule that, but is that still hanging out there?
It is.
Okay. Just want to make sure we don't lose track of it.
Yep, yep.
It didn't sound like a work, a special work session in April was going to be possible for all seven. So we either need to get that scheduled on a regular work session agenda or look towards May.
Can we then? I do wonder if our next, I can't recall some of the things that we have lingering for our next work session.
For the next one, staff is preparing to have a COVID-related discussion with you. I don't know that that'll take the whole time, but wanted to get your thoughts in regards to some of our reopening plans and as well as give you a chance to talk about going back to in-person meetings and what, what that would look like as well. So we're busy pulling that together and would hope to have that in the April 15th information packet so it could be discussed on the 20th.
We could, I guess my assumption is we could potentially do it on the 20th. It seemed like we should probably get it done sooner than later, start, start the conversation. And then that, so that would be the next, the next work session if people are in agreement with that.
Mayor, I can't remember, did we, were we waiting to get some of the feedback that, that we were outsourcing to be prepared for that work session? I guess I wasn't in necessarily a super hurry. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't falling off the radar.
Yeah, you know, we haven't, we haven't started with that outreach as we, we started to explore that. I think the, the feeling was that it would be much more beneficial to, to wait until we could do more in-person meetings to gather that feedback. So we were, we're hoping to initiate that here late spring and summer. Really with the preliminary plan, it's a little bit different than the CPRB and the OIR report. Really what, what I'm looking for, and, and for some of these, you're going to say, we want more input on this before we, before we go. I'm kind of looking for that direction on what, what do you really want to see input on? And what does staff have a green light to start working on? And, you know, I'll give you a couple of examples would, would be, you know, the idea of working to expand the local mobile crisis program, we're working to begin 911 integration discussions countywide. I hate to have that linger too long. I'd like to get to work on that. But I also feel like I need that permission from you because there may be other approaches to those, those issues that you want to take, or perhaps you want to wait till there's public input. So it's not going to be necessarily yes or no to all these items. It's going to be, staff can proceed ahead and begin planning on this. And we should really hold off and, and, and wait on, on these other items.
Yep. And I just want to at least make the point that we're actually talking about IP information part packet for March 18th.
I had, I had thought along the police, the preliminary plan, that there was some discussion, maybe I'm making this up, but some discussion about needing the staff direction on the interstate access as being something that needed to be done sooner rather than later. I have a memory that when I was asked for the, the the memo that I'm working on, on First Amendment activity within the protest context was kind of during that discussion.
Yeah, I think that, that ties back to the OIR report there. So I think you're right, Eleanor.
Okay.
When that legal analysis is done, we'll need to, we need to jump in and have that discussion.
Okay. We just wanted to make sure my memo was not
right.
On target.
So I guess what I would ask the council is, does it seem reasonable that the 20th, we start the conversation?
My thing that, anything that you need the public input, we have to wait for it. I don't know why we're in hurry, but if there is something the staff need us to talk about it and that doesn't need a public input, we can just talk about those things so we can give them direction to start. But I just believe that we should wait for more public input.
I, I, I think once we go through the I think once we go through the, because the staff kind of categorize and color things, some, you know, do, can they get the green light to start working on, doing some research? So I do think that as we go through there, we'll be able to identify as a council either what our plans are for the public, you know, engagement. But I do feel, I mean, this has been out since December, that we do need to have a conversation. And I would agree that there is something. Yeah, I, I do agree that there are some things that the public, you know, we should, you know, get their input on. I think as we're going through the items, I think we'll be able to decide that as a group.
I don't want to just like, agree on something, and after that, we hear feedback from the public, and they would say, oh, we should have, yes, wait for that, or this. I don't know.
Would we have Eleanor's memo by the 20th that we could talk about that?
My, my plan is to put that memo out before this, you know, the, the week of the 16th, right before I leave. I mean, I'm working with, Sue will know what I'm doing, so she can respond to questions and stuff, but that has been my plan, is to try and get that out to you before I leave.
The, the other, I mean, the other option is if we were to have a, just a work session only, we can potentially do a work session if people can maybe give me some assessment the week of the 26th, when, when we need to, maybe we can then have a discussion that week for one, the applications, or we can just keep that for the fourth, for the attorney applications. But then we can go into a work session the week of the 26th. So there's, you know, something that people can identify the week of the 26th, and if I remember what we did was, we went on Tuesday, the 20th, we went on a Tuesday, and I want to say we started at 3:00 PM. So I don't know what people thoughts are for Tuesday, the 27th at 3:00 PM, where we can just do a, a work session. So, and maybe we just have just that on our agenda. And
You mean, we, just to start our work session, when I, I would, Emily, that's what you're saying?
No, it would be the week of the 27th. I'm, the week of the
Of that week.
You're not available that week? Okay. So then it would just be the, either the 20th, or we can do it on the 4th.
What do we have on the 4th, Jeff?
I, I don't know. I'd have to, I'd have to spend some time and look at, look at what we have. Maybe it's something that I can, I can talk to the mayor, Mayor Protem, about in, in the coming weeks. You know, we also may be needing to schedule a, a discussion on the recovery funds that, that, that the city's been allocated, once some of those treasury guidance documents come out. So I, I could see that sneaking up on us and, and taking some time on the 4th, but maybe in another week or two, we'll have some more clarity on, on a couple of these outstanding issues.
What I might propose is, because I, I would agree, I think that recovery, we need to spend some time there. So what I might suggest is that I'll put one more thing out there. Can, is, are people available on Tuesday, the 11th of May at 3:00 PM? And if we don't get consensus now, then I'll just have Ellie reach out to us.
I'm free on.
So looking at May 11th at 3:00 PM.
I could.
I'm working on that date.
It's okay. It's, it's right before Eid, Maz. Does that impact you? Eid is on the 12th.
You're on mute, Mayor Protem.
I, I was just thinking about that, but, but let me see my, I'm opening my calendar. One second, please.
All right.
But thank you, Janice. You always remember this. Yeah, I, I can do it. How long is it going to be?
I think we should at least plan for two hours.
Okay, then. I'm for it.
Okay. All right. Looked like we have consensus. Everybody's, Burgess, are you, you said yes. Okay. All right. All right. So we'll, we'll do it that day. Anything else? Well, let's formal agenda. Anything else from there? Well, I guess we, we're actually at March, let's stay with March 18th IP. Anything else from that IP?
Mayor, while we're on schedule here, can I just mention one, one more thing? So the other kind of major assignment I need have before I leave is to a, address the CPRB recommend proposals for changes to the ordinance. And I'm, I'm starting to work on that, but I think that's going to have to hold until we get through the legislative session. There's some bills that are going through that, that look like pretty likely may become law, and they're going to influence what we can and can't do with, with the CPRB, I think. So I think we need to wait until that's done to, to do that.
That's, should be drawing to, to an end by the end of this month. They're working on, they're working on budget now. If they go past the end of, of April, then they don't get pretty, so they don't want to stay.
We'll just do what we can do before I leave, but I won't put that out before I leave.
Okay. Understand.
So we'll follow up with that.
Yep. I'm saying Shaken has a, we understand. Yes. All right. Anything else with info packet, March 9, 18th?
I just wanted to point out the really, the, the really thorough work planned from the Historic Preservation Commission. That it's, I, I found it really worthwhile going through and really helpful to, to see how they want to integrate essentially climate and a lot of other things into their work as well, as well as racial justice.
Right. Anything else? March 25th? April 1st? Okay, hearing nothing else. Any updates on assignment boards, commissions, and committees? I know we've been doing stuff. I used to be a little more organized with my, my calendar to pull it up, but that's gone by the way, so.
Well, we, we had a meeting of the Jack, and now I can't even remember what we did, which is really terrible to say. But Susan, do you recall offhand what we, what we did?
Yeah, there's an issue. There's an issue with our contract for the radios that's being changed. We just hadn't been able to get a bid from one of the companies. So that'll probably be changing. Budget's all set. That really is about all.
We did have a meeting of the MPO. Most all of us were also at that, and major thing was approval of streets projects that Iowa City had presented. So that was a good thing. The other was the federal swap, federal aid swap program came up yet again, and was, again, our group voted to opt out of that program.
Hearing nothing else, then we are adjourned until our formal meeting within about 20 minutes, which will start at 6:00 PM. And that is a different Zoom, and I'll see you all there.